Okay, all right. Good evening. I would like to call the March 11, 2025, Congress Select Board Meeting to Order. The time is now six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. Draw your mind, please, standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, would you care to lead us off on the community prayer?
Yes. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. First item on our agenda is citizens' participation, seeing no one coming up to the mic. Next item, we're going to be reviewing the town warrant articles for the annual town meeting. The first article is Article II, a free cash article. James, would you take us away?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. This is the free cash article that we discussed the other night. We just had certified of our free cash. So you can see, it's on page three at the top that transfers to. These are the amounts that we talked about the other night.
Do we vote on this the other night?
So right now, we voted on it, so.
We did vote on this.
So is there any action that needs to be taken? It hasn't changed, right?
Correct. You have a select board vote. Well, I'm sorry, to accept it to the warrant.
I'll make a motion that we accept Article II to the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, issues, or concerns, seeing none of those in favor of adding Article II, the allocation of funds from fiscal 2025 free cash, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Four zero. Okay. Next, Article III is the overall fiscal budget. Well, I guess, would anyone like to motion to add this to the town?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding Article III to the annual town warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Oppose zero. Any one like to make a motion to approve Article III?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions, issues, or concerns? Mr. Ryan?
So, sorry. So my first thing is, I think, in this, we, you know, we're voting on 52,283,431. So even though there's a bunch of numbers in here, it seems a little bit confusing as to what the number is that's being voted on. It's okay to disclose, I guess, the different areas, like the, you know, the townwide fixed liabilities, which is going to reference Appendix C, which I don't think we have yet potentially. So I think the article is written to say that you're going to raise and appropriate 51,096,431 from tax base and proceeds and things like that. And then we are transferring from the ambulance reserve cemetery and solar net meeting. So the total of those numbers that are on the proposed motion do add up to the 52,283,431. But again, it is, it is a little confusing, I think, with the, you know, showing or explaining that what the fixed liabilities and the non-appropriated number that's in here.
I would agree, Mr. Ryan. The Finance Director is trying to be transparent and show us the overall budget for the town. She did put in the non-appropriated and other expenses here. You see totaling $3,559. And then the budget transfers, which are essentially the free cash. And which are going to come into town. Again, she wants to be transparent with the overall number. You know, the town budget really does sit at the 52,283,431. But I would agree with you.
And just to correct something, there is no free cash transfer in this article. I just want to make sure that that was clear. This article doesn't have free cash.
Correct. So there's a separate free cash.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask, are there any changes in these line items from what we discussed last week?
No.
Thanks.
I might just clarify. The changes we requested last week are in these numbers.
Okay. But what we did, nothing from what we discussed last week? No differences from what we discussed?
No, nothing. No. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving Article III, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Oppose zero. Okay, next. Article V. Capital Improvement Budget. Would you like a motion to add this to the town meeting warrant?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor adding Article V to the annual town warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
If you could, Mr. Chairman, we did try to clarify this a little bit. You see the 1.3 million dollars in free cash that we did talk about.
Yep.
And then just breaking out the bond authorization. So again, a little clearer to the residents, you know, if we're looking to borrowing that 2.4 million for the fire ladder truck. And then the ambulance receipts, again, which is a separate fund. They're paying for their own, you know, out of their funding, they're paying for the ambulance. So $350,000. But just a little, a little different format than you saw the other night.
Yep. I see that. So total still ties to the 4,500,000.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I might suggest before we print these totals, it might be a little confusing to some people how we have the total in the top line on the, on page seven, but we have everything else on, on page six. Might get some questions about that. So if we could get the total.
On the same page.
The 1.3 million. If we could get that at the bottom of page six or bottom of the same page, there's all the individual line items.
Yeah, just move the article, just the language down to the bottom.
Yeah, we'll do formatting. We'll make sure the formatting looks right when we go to print.
Thanks.
Mr. Ryan?
And my question is, what's the total amount that's being appropriated? It feels like it's the 1,650,000, whereas we're authorizing a borrow for the ladder truck of 2.4 million. But it seems to me that we're actually appropriating because we're taking money from the ambulance reserves. So that's an appropriation. So is it correct that we're appropriating 1,650,000? Do I read that correct?
You are appropriating all three pots of money, if you will.
But you're authorizing a borrow?
But one's, you're right.
Okay. But in terms of like where money's actually being, you know, we're not paying for the.
Correct, correct. You are correct, Mr. Ryan. Yes. So right, the 1.65, if you will, is appropriation. The other one's a borrowing.
Because at the end of the day, and I don't know how we do the recap, you know, to the state, you're going to show total appropriations from town meetings. So I'm trying to discern what's the total appropriations versus what's the authorization to borrow. So I don't know if we could talk to the Finance Director just to clarify that. I mean, it's fine the way it is, but just clarify the total appropriation in this article versus the authorization to borrow. Might be good to note that for people.
The motions should clarify that. The motions say what's being borrowed.
I think, is it in the motion as to what's being appropriated versus borrowed?
Well, yeah. The motion states that the town will appropriate the sum of 1,300,000 from free cash certified by the Department of Revenue and 350 from ambulance receipts. And then it does separate bond authorization at 2.5 million, 2.4 million.
Will we, sorry, will we run into any issues with the way the article's worded? And don't you have, is it a different vote for an authorization for, for a borrow for like two-thirds or whatever?
It says it right here on page seven.
But now if we take that this is one motion, will that cause any problems? Will that have to be two motions?
So do you have the handout with corrected wording?
Okay. So we're doing two motions?
There are two motions, yes.
On page seven of the handout.
Perfect. All right. So I guess I, that's my question. It's the 1,650,000 is the total appropriation. That's going to be, come from existing funds or a raise and taxes and the other rest of the, all right. Thanks.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve this article?
So moved.
Second.
I think we did.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns, seeing none of all those in favor of approving Article V, Capital Improvement Budgets, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Item six, Article VI, solar funds transfer.
Have we put that on the warrant yet?
I don't think we have.
Okay. Motion to place it on the warrant.
Second. We have a motion and a second to put Article VI on the warrant. Everyone, any questions? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve Article VI?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
Sure. Did we state in the wording the purpose of the middle high school stabilization fund? Does that already exist? We already have that?
It does already exist.
Okay. So we're just adding more money into it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think what we're doing is somewhere in here, it states that this was originally voted back in the 2023 annual town meeting article. So I want to say this isn't appropriation. This is moving it from whatever fund it was placed back in 2023 and putting it into the stabilization.
Correct. This is a transfer, yes.
From solar metering fund into the middle school, the middle high school stabilization fund?
Mr. Chair, do we know what the balance of the solar net metering fund is right now?
I do not have that number.
I think I, I think I have it. Accumulated to date, this is coming from as of March 6, fiscal year 2024, 2.6 million.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve Article VI. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Article VII. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'm going to add Article VII to the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Four zero.
Motion to recommend Article VII.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, issues, concerns?
So if you can explain it a little?
I was going to ask Mr. Cannon to watch this.
Thank you.
Sure. For the rescinding of the borrowing. So it is the, the middle high school repairs done back in 2015. You can see really only a small amount there, 96,000. I'm sure they just didn't, we think, to close it out. The new elementary school project, again, a little bit more, 1,854,000, 058. Again, back to 2015. I'm not really sure why they kept these open for so long. You know, I could, I could try to find out. I don't think they had any reasoning. I think they just forgot to close them out.
So my question is, was this an authorization to borrow a certain amount? So we didn't borrow up to that amount?
Correct, correct.
So it's just removing the, taking down the authorization. It doesn't affect anything. It just, we had authorized to borrow. We don't need to borrow any more money. So we're going to reset that authorization.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. That's what the article says.
Yes, I'm trying to summarize it.
And I do know with the library and town hall roof search, just because I've been here for this one, well, even though it's 2023 borrowing, I believe the town meeting authorized 1.6 million in borrowing. And then the repairs actually came in for replacements. You know, 500, what is it? 37,000? Trying to do math in my head real quick here. But anyways, this, again, it's the remainder that's left over. So we, we don't need to borrow that money.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve Article VII. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
That was to recommend.
We have a motion to recommend Article VIII.
Second.
A second. All those in favor adding Article VIII to the annual town meeting warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
Have we put Article VIII on the warrant yet?
Is that what we just?
We just did.
That's what we just voted to recommend it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was, that was a vote to placing it on the warrant.
I would recommend placing it on the warrant and hold off recommending it right now. I still see there is, there was an account today that was added.
Oh, sorry.
So what did we just vote on?
It was recommended.
The idea was to vote it, the idea was to vote it to put on the warrant, but I guess I missed the, the approval.
So that blank space for transportation is 250,000. I apologize. I did not fill that in in time for the meeting.
250,000?
Yeah.
250,000.
So the article is complete.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Gannon, but you wanted us to wait on approving it?
Yeah, now that we have the number, I think it's fine. You move forward with it.
So I'll make a motion to add Article VIII to the warrant. So we at least get that.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor adding Article VIII to the town meeting warrant, say aye.
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 Motion to recommend.
We did that already.
All right.
You want it as amended?
As amended, there you go.
Yes. As amended. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. All right. Next, I don't think we voted on, do we even vote? We did vote to add this, right? I think we voted to add this.
We voted to add it, but not to recommend it, yes, recall.
A move that we recommend Article IX, the Community Preservation Committee funds.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions or issues or concerns?
I have one question. Just through you to the town administrator, perhaps you have the answer. I just want to check, make sure none of these numbers have changed since our meeting with the Community Preservation Committee.
They actually have, Mr. Townsend. So if you look at the top two numbers, the appropriation of 880,000 plus the 375 in available funds. Again, you know, 1.2 million, if you will, math in my head here. The entire appropriations plus the reserves add up to that 1.2 million. And what has really changed is there's a certain percentage that you have to put into the different funds.
Reserve funds?
The reserve funds, the historic. So, you know, it should really be the 88,000 is 10%. But because in the appropriations, again, we've done 85,000, if you will. Let me just try to look here. I think it's between the Union Society, right, 67?
Yeah, but that's historic.
Yeah, that's what this is. This is historic, right?
Yeah.
And then it's the cemetery and the photography. So those three things add up to 85,000. Because you've spent that money, you don't have to put the full 88,000 into reserves. You only have to put 3,000 into there. You look at the housing reserve, they have to do the full 88,000 because there's no appropriation for any historic, I mean, any housing. On the open space, they have appropriated the 375,000, you know, above the 88,000. So you don't have to put in any money for open space.
Thank you.
And then the remainder of the 1.2 million, if you will, again, I apologize when I have another.
It's on your printout, 1255.
I'm sorry. Oh, 1.255, yeah, 1,255,000. The remainder of that is the 342,850. And we did bring this back to the CPC committee. The chairman is going to inform all his members that these numbers have changed. He does not believe they need to re-vote it because they're, they're just the reserves, not the appropriations. The projects haven't changed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm just a little lost in all the numbers that were thrown out. So I see the 1,255, yes. I see the two allocations that make it up. The first grouping of numbers, the appropriations total 821,150. The second group of numbers, the reserves equal, equal 433,850, and the total is 1,255. So the body equals the total. Great. What we're saying about the historical reserve fund should be on, based on its allocation, should be how much?
88,000.
88. So that means you spent?
That would be the 10%. But we're not putting that because several projects were the historical projects?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to. Where's the, where's the 85 and the other up in the section?
The five, the 13, and the 67.
So D, E, and F.
Got it. Okay.
Yep. Add up to the 85.
Got it. All right. Are there any other questions, issues, or concerns? All right. All those in favor approving Article IX, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
Now, is that to recommend?
That was to recommend, yeah.
All right.
Motion to put Article 10 on the warrant?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor adding Article 10 to the warrant, say aye.
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 Motion to recommend Article 10?
Second.
We have a motion to recommend Article 10. Are there any questions, issues, or concerns about Article 10?
We do.
I'm trying to find Article 10.
So we do have the money in the budgets to transfer, I assume? Somebody check that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right. Yes, relatively small dollars, 1,000. Okay. So we've got, would anyone like to make a motion to approve Article 10?
So moved.
We just did.
Oh, we did, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Okay. Article 11.
Motion to put on the warrant Article 11.
Didn't we vote on this already?
Did we vote on this already? I think we did, to put on the warrant.
Is this another as amended scenario?
Yeah, it was requested to split the article out into two separate articles.
Yes, we split it out.
Okay.
So you're seeing here 11 and 12, which is the original article that you had split out into two.
We're only voting on 11 and we're not voting on 12?
Correct. Correct. Just voting on 11.
So did 11 change at all? Any verbiage at all? Anything change from the one?
We removed the reference to a 99-year lease with Middleborough. This is just simply dissolving North Harbor Water District.
Right.
Okay.
All right. So would anyone like to make a motion to, we've already added it. So approve Article 11 as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I have one question. Just reading, reading the bottom, I'm sorry, starting from the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line down at the very end, dissolving the district and transferring the operation to the Select Board and the Director of Operation and Maintenance will allow the town to manage the system more effectively. My only question about that is, I would assume if we dissolve the North Harbor Water District, the Select Board would become the Water Commissioners.
Well, we already are Water Commissioners.
Well, but my question is, the way it reads, it sounds like we're adding the Director of Operation and Maintenance to that. And I just wonder if he's one of the Water Commissioners as well. Just when I read it, I wonder about that.
Yeah. I believe that is not the intent.
And I thought that as well, but when I read the article, I just wondered about that. And no disrespect, but he's not an elected official. And I don't think he should be one of the Water Commissioners.
You can strike that. You want to strike?
Yeah, you want to just strike it?
I think so.
Yeah.
So motion to recommend the article as amended?
As amended. Thank you. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? All right. All those in favor of approving Article 11 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. All right. Now we're going to Article 14.
So I don't think we voted to put that on the warrant.
We did not, no.
So that is to be, this is new?
Yep.
Motion to place Article 14 about workplace violence on the agenda.
On the, on the warrant?
On the warrant.
That too, on the warrant, yes.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding Article 14 to the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
Motion to recommend Article 14.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns about Article 14? Maybe, Mr. Gannon, can you give us a little bit of what you're talking about?
Article 14, so the state has passed law prohibiting authorized permit, handgun permit holders entering onto municipal buildings. This will essentially.
Wait, with their handguns?
With the handguns, correct. This would, you know, if you would say, allow people to walk in with, again, permitted handguns into municipal buildings. So we will allow that action to happen, as they do today, you know, again, as is allowed today. Where the concern is here is that, you know, people might be leaving these handguns out in their cars. It'd be more susceptible to theft. Could be a concern for the.
But, but do we have a bylaw that that does not allow people to bring their firearms into town?
We do not. It's a new state law that's been passed. And we have to, we have to opt out of it, if you will.
And it's enforced by a police chief, I think.
Correct.
Okay. Forget what we stand. We have a, we have a motion. We have a second to approve?
We do.
We do.
Any other questions, issues, concerns?
Do, my only, well, we have to have this done tonight. So as I say, would we have time to hear from the police chief? Would we want to talk to him about any, any, about his input?
Sure, if you, if you'd like to.
Do we have time to do that, or?
Do we have an opinion from the police chief? Has this been discussed with him?
Yes, yes.
I have to assume it has been.
Yes. He's actually the proponent of it. He's bringing it, he's the one bringing it forward.
Okay. All right, then I'm fine.
We've had multiple discussions with him about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of approving Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero. Article 19, we're jumping ahead. 19.
Let's see. Do we need a motion for on the warrant?
16, 17.
I guess I'll make a motion to add Article 19 to the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add Article 19 to the annual town warrant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I have one quick question about that, if I may. Mr. Cannon, isn't this already in place? This would allow the town to deny licenses, permits, and other approvals to parties who have outstanding taxes, fees, assessments, and so on.
Correct. And I'm looking for the language here. I believe this tightens up the timeframe.
Oh, okay.
And again, I apologize for not having it right in front of me.
At least 12 months, okay.
So it just tightens up the timeframe for denial of the permit.
Okay. Thank you.
But you are correct. We already have. It is on the.
All right. Do, would I like to make a motion to approve Article 19?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I'm just looking at the amendment. So it does, they did cross out for not less than a 12-month period. So they're just eliminating that altogether. So town charges and so there is no timeframe now, right? Is that, do I read that correct?
I believe you are reading that correctly.
So the treasurer collector can, so there is no town timeframe anymore. They can just.
Right. I think you had to wait 12 months before. And so maybe you run in and ask for a permit while you're not paying taxes.
Now it's zero. Okay, now it's zero.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I, my second question would be, is there a recommendation from the treasurer collector?
Again, yes. Again, the treasurer is the sponsor. We've had discussions with her. She's very much in favor of it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Article 25.
I think, oh, yeah.
Oh, we have to vote on?
Anyone can make a motion to add Article 25 to the annual.
No, we didn't vote on 19 yet, I don't think. We just had discussion, but we didn't vote to approve it.
All right. Any, all those in favor approving Article 19 for the annual town meeting, one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed zero. Four zero. All right, 25. All right. Next item, Article 25. Anyone like to make a motion to add this to the annual town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed zero. All right. Anyone like to make a motion to approve Article 25?
So moved.
We have a motion. Oh, this is a zoning article, correct?
Yes. I just want to point out that in the past, we have not approved or disapproved planning board articles unless there was something extraordinary about them.
Yeah, I agree. We approved one the other night because it was clerical, just a, so.
We didn't. I think there was another one that was sort of extraordinary that we voted on, but normally we don't.
All right. Okay. So we've, we put it on the town warrant?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
All right. I guess the second one would be following the same.
Motion to put Article 27, Amendment to the Rate of Development, on the warrant?
Second. We have a motion, a second, add Article 27 to the annual town warrant. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think at the last meeting, the joint meeting we had with the finance committee, I had asked about the, the North Harbor Water District budget, and, and I had been told we were going to vote on it and discuss it tonight. But I don't see it on the agenda. Is there a reason that we're not discussing that this evening?
I think it was, we, we weren't going to discuss it tonight, we're adding it to the 18th because they're meeting on the?
Correct, that was my understanding, we're going to add it to the 18th because we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, maybe, maybe I misunderstood and I thought it was tonight's meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I probably misunderstood, I just, I wondered where that was, that's all. Okay, so we'll discuss that next Tuesday?
Correct, because again, tomorrow night's the meeting with finance director and the North Harbor Water District committee.
Okay, thank you.
So tomorrow night, their discussion, are they voting on their budget tomorrow night, the commissioners?
It is on, it is on their agenda to vote on the budget.
So for our meeting, we'll have their proposed budget?
Correct.
Would you be able to send out the, everything, what, some may put up results of what that meeting was, the vote, things like that? Okay, thank you.
Next item, Authorization for the Town Administrator to Sign Department of Environmental Protection Enforcement Order for the Town Municipal Well.
I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the Department of Environmental Protection Enforcement Order for the town's municipal well on Meadow Brook Way.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments on this, Mr. Gannon?
No, we fully intend to comply with the requirements of DEP. This is, you know, they told us what they're looking for, they're looking for redundancy well right here with the municipal buildings. You know, this is just in case there's a change to the order that they give us between now and, so we don't have to have a select board meeting, that's all.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. All those in, all those in favor of authorize the town administrator to sign the Department of Environmental Protection Enforcement Order for the town municipal well, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining from that vote.
Okay. Next item, Town Administrator Evaluation Results. The reviews have been accumulated and scored. The chair reviewed the evaluation process. Out of a, valuation of the town administrator consists of five sections that were scored on a scale of 1 to 5, 5 being the highest score. The category descriptions and scoring was follows. Goals and objectives, the score was 3.6. Knowledge, skills, and professional development, 3.36. Core responsibilities, staffing, personnel, financial, and management, 3.3. Leadership board, board relations, and personal qualities, 3.9. Community relations and communication, 3.53. For a total, total overall evaluation score of 3.54. Thank you, the Assistant Town Administrator, for putting all this information together.
Thank the board for the work that they put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good process.
Thank you. Time for town administrator updates.
Sure, I've got a few things to run by. Just so the, and I know we don't have the update on the, on the, but the deck at the COA is under construction, so that is underway. You know, we had, we had a little break, well, we're having a break of weather right now. So I know that deck is underway and hopefully will be completed soon. On the pickleball court, they are waiting for the asphalt plant to open up. They do hope to have a, at least the asphalt all down by April 15th. That's the day that they have to go back and do the box turtle protections for the site. So again, they're hoping to have it all wrapped up by April 15th. That doesn't mean the pickleball courts will be open yet. I have verification, Brian wants me to make everybody aware of that. They still have the fence to put up, the paint to put down. So there'll be some, you know, some details that have to be done besides that, but, but it is moving forward very well. The town did receive their Chapter 90 funding, which is the state money that's given to the town for roadway improvements. You know, one thing I'll say coming out of the state, the state's budget, they have normally done $200 million statewide for Chapter 90 funding. This year, they, they upped that to $300 million statewide, again, for Chapter 90 funding. So, you know, we get approximately $400,000 a year this year. We're up closer to, almost, actually, almost $700,000. So, you know, a good benefit there. I'm a big believer that Chapter 90 funding goes a long way with town forces, usually do a pretty, you know, a very good job of managing those funds. And that's, you know, fixing everything from culverts to fixing potholes to repaving sections of road. I think Rochester Road was done last year, I can't remember the other one that was done.
I think they, they're doing, they did Silver Street?
Yeah, I think they did Silver Street, yeah.
And I haven't had a chance to talk to them about this year's schedule yet, but as soon as I can, I'll go, I'll get that to you. We did speak a little bit about the municipal well here. I know we've had some, some issues recently. I just want to kind of read over what has happened there. This is back to January 18. There was a loss of pressure due to well safety locks from contaminant, chemical alarm, signaling high chlorine reading determined to be possible, bad badges of chlorine, system pump purge and placed back into service. Again, February 3, a loss of pressure due to well safety lock from chemical alarm, again, high chlorine reading, grab samples taken showed readings were fine in the sense it needed to be calibrated and put back into service. February 19, the loss of pressure due to storage tank low level determined the, the well was not making up water at an adequate weight and determined the pressure regulating valve was restricted. The valve was clean and placed back to the service, so again, that helped it. On February 25, DEP was on-site at the municipal well with Small Water Systems and the Director of Operations and Maintenance to review the system. They went over the recent events, explanation of events, and measures taken to rectify. They are satisfied with the explanation of the occurrence and states, steps taken for these events not to repeat. The director's working with Small Water Systems and John Neely to add additional safeguards, so notification to provide in time so that these repairs will not happen, you know, we don't have a loss of pressure in the buildings. I also think, one thing we had in our discussion with DEP, again, they're asking for our redundancy well. One thing they talked about was greatest storage of the, of the facility itself also. These events, boy, I wish I had written down the timelines. I know one occurred, I want to say at 5:20 at night, and it was fixed by, by 7:20 at the same evening. But what happened is that, at 5:20, it starts drawing down our storage. If we had greater storage capacity, it would have been alerted, it would have been fixed, it would have been back online before that storage had been run down, and people would not have an interruption of water. So that's something we're going to look at as we go through that DEP enforcement of the redundant well, when we can increase the storage there, because with all these events, these aren't long-duration events, they're very short-duration events, but if we, you know, provide continuous water to the folks there while the repairs are taking place, that's something we want to look for at the town. Just a reminder to the board, next Monday, we have luncheon at the COA for St. Patrick's Day. I believe the event is sold out, so, you know, if, if there is something else you're looking to do with COA, please look at their website, they're always holding events, there's plenty going on, but on St. Patrick's Day, that luncheon is, is sold out. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, on the, on the deck, do we have an estimated completion date for the deck?
I don't right now, Mr. Townsend, I'll find out, I'll find.
Well, I just, I ask because I know we still have some, some questions about the furnishings, and I just want to make sure we have that set up so that when the deck is finished, we have?
Chairs and tables.
Chairs and furnishings on the?
Yes, yes.
On the, on the deck.